Anthony Higgins, who has his virtual hand raised. And Anthony, your three minutes will begin once you are unmuted.
Thank you.
Yeah, hello. I guess I understand that there is no fiscal impact. So if we have, for instance, an officer that's assigned to traffic and gets a 7% traffic bonus, his other salary will be deducted by 7%? Is that what you're saying for this case? Is it the same case for the field training officers? If they're acting as a field training officer, it says 7%. Does that mean if they get that bonus, they're giving up 7% of their other pay? Does it mean that the number of, it says here, no more than six field training officers? How many do we have today? Is it more or less than six? Is it three? I would just like some rea-- same thing for the police liaison. Are they going to, they get a 7% bonus in all cases? Are they going to be giving up 7% of their pay? So that there is no fiscal impact? And in all cases, does the number of police liaisons or field training officers or traffic officers premiums? Is that not increased by the provisions of this MOU? I hope you understand what I'm saying. I'm just not convinced that in all cases, field training officers, traffic officers, police liaisons, that were not either increasing the total number that are eligible or in all cases, they're giving up their regular pay in lieu of the bonus? And I'd just like some reassurance. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online? No. Okay, anyone else? Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak on this item? Okay, we'll bring it back to the council for deliberations.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the, we approve staff recommendation, resolution and side letter to their most beach, Police Officers Association memorandum of understanding attachments one and two.
Second.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. Any other comments by any members? I just have a question that the comments made by the speaker online, he was referring to positions outside of the detective position. Okay, if there's no other comments, Madam City Clerk, can we begin voting? Okay, the results are up on screen. Madam City Clerk, could you announce the vote call?
Voting, motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you very much. And what do we have next on our agenda?
Next, we have item 17C, consideration of the city's position on Hermosa Beach City School District Measure HV and Los Angeles County Measure A, which will appear on the November 5, 2024 general election ballot.
Okay, thank you very much. And we're ready to begin our staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protam and members of the city council. The Hermosa Beach City School District Board of Education voted to place a general obligation bond, which is entitled Measure HV, on the November 5 general election ballot. And the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors voted to place a sales tax measure, which is called Measure A, on the November ballot, general election ballot. And at the September 24 city council meeting, Councilmember Detoy requested and Councilmembers Jackson and Massey supported an item to consider the city's position on these two measures. In regard to Measure HV, school facilities needs analysis identified various renovations required at Hermosa Valley School. According to the school district, health, safety, security and technology improvements are also needed at all sites. If approved, Measure HV would not increase the tax rate and it would extend the current $34.95 tax rate for property owners are paying from prior voter-approved elections in 2002 and 2016 and would generate approximately $28.7 million to fund repairs and upgrades. The school district has one of the lowest tax rates in LA County and the South Bay. The current rate, as stated, is $34.95 per $100,000 of assessed valuation, while El Segundo tax rate is $153.07, Manhattan Beach is $87.96 and Redondo Beach is $72.34. In regard to the county's Measure A, in 2017, voters approved Measure H, a quarter cent sales tax to provide funds for homeless services and short-term housing. It is currently set to expire in 2027. In 2023, Assembly Bill 1679 was passed in the state legislature and became law on January 1, 2024. This bill would allow LA County to impose a district tax that exceeds the current 10.25% cap. If approved, Measure A would repeal and replace Measure H. The new initiative, Measure A, is a half a percent sales tax for affordable housing production, preservation and homeless services and a permanent tax with no sunset provision. If passed, the net effect would be to increase the effective sales tax rate by 1/4% on all taxable sales occurring in cities like Hermosa Beach. Staff recommends city council consider taking a support, oppose or neutral position on either or both Measure HV and Measure A and provide direction to the city manager as deemed appropriate. And with that, staff is available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Regarding the county measure, A, although the net increase is 0.25%, if it passes, if it doesn't pass, then the other one will expire. So our rate would go down 0.5%. Is that correct? Because the other 0.25 would expire.
The current Measure H is set to expire in 2027. So in, say, the 2026 election, they would potentially have the opportunity to take a different action or propose a different action to voters. So at this time, Measure H would stay in place as a quarter cent sales tax until 2027.
And it would only go down by that quarter cent when it sunsets, not half cent?
Right, when it sunsets.
Like?
Yes, by a quarter from existing. But if this passes, then it goes up a quarter. It goes up a half and then the other quarter is absorbed in that half. So, okay. Thank you. Any council members have some questions? Councilmember Massey?
Not a question, Mr. Mayor, but I just wanted to inform the council that the South Bay Cities Council of Governments Board of Directors considered whether to take a position on Measure A and decided not to take a position on it. I'm not sure if contract cities or league of cities or any other agencies that we all sit on have considered taking a position on Measure A and what the outcome of that was, but I just wanted to share with the council what the council of governments decided.
Thank you. Councilmember Detoy?
Thank you. So currently, Measure H, quarter cent sales tax in Hermosa Beach, projections based on our own Measure HB. We contribute approximately $1 million a year to Measure H funds. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then as far as direct local benefit that we see, and I know that there's, you know, homelessness and affordable housing is a broad regional issue. So I know that there's other affordable homes getting built in other jurisdictions, but the direct benefit that we see off of Measure H funds approximately is?
The approximate amount that we see back in Hermosa Beach can be attributed to the Local Solutions Fund, which is allocated through the South Bay City Council of Governments. And we estimate that at about $145,000. And I'll briefly let you know where those come from. Our Beach Cities Outreach Team, Harbor Interface, the contract with the Beach Cities is $167,000 a year and we benefit from roughly a third of that since it is shared. We also benefit from the homeless court that we share with City of Redondo Beach and that's $180,000 a year. Since we share that, you can, you know, roughly estimate that we benefit from half of that. And we also benefit from a contract that South Bay Cog provides for single-room occupancy bedding through Share Collaborative and also Client Aid, which can be attributed to some of the more general regional things that we benefit from. But roughly $140,000, $150,000 a year.
And then when we pushed through and proposed what is now HB CARES, did we go to the county to look for funding for that?
We did initially apply for Local Solutions Fund for that, but we weren't able to obtain any.
And then HB CARES currently is a grant from?
From the federal government.
Okay. Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Madam City Clerk, do we have any cards turned in for speakers on this?
We do. Eric Horner, three minutes will begin once you begin speaking.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam and council. Appreciate the opportunity to speak on these very important bonds. I'm a proud alumni of Hermosa Valley, having attended Hermosa Valley from third to eighth grade. And one of my favorite classes at Hermosa Valley was Mrs. Ducllo's Science Lab in fourth grade. You may know Mrs. Ducllo as the wife of former Mayor Jeff Ducllo, but to me, she's Mr. Ducllo. And that class gave me my first hands-on experience in a science lab to really get acquainted with the process of the scientific method, discovery. And I just say that because I want to make sure that the council takes a strong position in support of this bond so that the future generations going through Hermosa Valley will have expanded opportunities to use these science labs to prepare for careers in STEM in an incredibly competitive job market, especially as hopefully in the future, some of these kids are going to be able to get jobs in STEM, have a high wage, be able to move back to Hermosa Beach. So I encourage the council to support that bond. On Measure A, this is, this is obviously a very difficult issue and I appreciate Councilman Detoy, the question that you asked about how much are we essentially putting into this countywide fund through our tax, our sales tax contributions versus how much we're getting out? What I will say there is that as a small city that does not have a lot of homeless shelters, permanent supportive housing, I think it's important for us to consider ways in which we can be a good neighbor to the county as we look for regional solutions to the homelessness crisis. It's hard for me to imagine us building out a lot of permanent supportive housing shelters here in Hermosa Beach. And if we're not going to do that, I think it's imperative that we put our money where our mouth is and say, we are going to contribute to countywide solutions that hopefully we will be able then to direct folks living on the streets here in Hermosa towards, as the police chief, you know, highlighted a really great anecdote earlier about their contact with a family that was able to get set up with permanent supportive housing, it sounds like, in a neighboring area outside of Hermosa Beach. I'm willing to bet that some of the funding that went towards that housing development came from countywide funds, whether it was, you know, the preceding sales tax measure to Measure A or Prop HHH in Los Angeles City. These bonds, you know, do provide a lot of housing opportunities for folks that we can take advantage of if not building directly in the city. So thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the council chambers wishing to speak on this item? Okay, bring it back to the council for deli-- oh. Oh my gosh, you got a card. Pull that card out. I didn't see your name on the list here.
Wow, I got lost on Measure 16 or whatever it was anyway. All right, I got six seconds to tell you everything I would need to know about Measure HV. Can we reset the clock, please? Mayor Francois, members of city council, valued members of staff, Steve Isaiah, Major HV supporter and campaign coordinator. All of you know that the citizens passed Measure S, excuse me, in 2016. That money was used to demolish North School and totally rebuild what is now called Vista. Also substantial remodeling for View up on Prospect, but poor Hermosa Valley didn't get a lot of love and that's what Measure HV is primarily about. Where is the money going to go? Four basic buckets. First of all, enhanced perimeter security, unfortunately needed in this day and age. Secondly, the school was built in 1949 and yes, it's had upgrades and refurbishment over the years, but not as much as it really needs. So next, money is going to go to rehab the buildings. And part of that is going to be something dear and dear to Councilman Massey's heart, energy efficiency, solar. Class, science classrooms were mentioned. Our science classrooms are a couple of decades old and we hope that teacher, Mrs. Ducllo, will recognize state-of-the-art science labs when they are constructed with this bond money. And then lastly, the playing fields that can be better used if they're redesigned. What's most important, already mentioned in your presentation, no increase, for those of interested in taxpayer money, no increase in the amount of money that our taxpayers right now are paying for school bonds. You're saying, how can this be? Well, the answer is because the existing bonds are being paid off faster than was originally forecast because of the rising income from property taxes when homes are sold in Hermosa. Was the taxpayer money well spent on Measure S? I believe it was because I am also chairman of the Citizens Oversight Committee. Four times a year, we met and reviewed every single invoice that was spent to make sure it was going to bricks and mortar. That same Oversight Committee will be required when, I hope, Measure HV is passed. So lastly, we need 55% of voters to pass this. So your unanimous endorsement would be very much appreciated. It's an investment in our kids. And more importantly, the broader message is it's an investment in our faith in the future of Hermosa. Thank you so much. And I return 29 seconds.
Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk, do we have any more cards that have been turned in?
Yes, Anthony Higgins, your three minutes will begin once you're unmuted.
Yeah, I'd like to talk about the staff report for Measure A. In the staff report, it says that there are no, Hermosa Beach doesn't have a sales tax that goes towards general services. And then a lot of the other stuff is based on that statement. What I don't understand is why that statement was made. We have a 1% sales tax, although it's reimbursed by the state. That goes to general services to the tune of $3.8 million a year. We have what is, for all intents and purposes, a hotel sales tax that generates $5 million a year. And the propositions and the measures that are mentioned and that would be Prop A, Prop C, Measure R and that Measure M generate another $2.5 billion. And these are basically reimbursements to the sales tax. So, you know, why are we saying that with, in the Measure A staff report, that we don't have a sales tax that goes towards general city services? That seems disindignuous. I'd like a clarification. In addition, you know, I'm not sure that the numbers we heard, how much are we paying out? How much are residents paying out for Measure A, Measure H? Or under Measure A, how much will the residents be paying out? What will we be getting back notwithstanding that, you know, yeah, we have to use other county services because we're a small city? But I hope that is all clear in your mind before you enter the fray of whether the city wants to support it. Regarding Measure HV, you know, we just had Measure S and they put $40 million toward the school and another $20 million towards renovations at View and Vista. And with Measure S, we built, you know, a rather significant basketball gym. Not, we didn't build science labs. We didn't fix the electricity. We built a basketball gym. So I'm just not sure you want to get into the whole fray of Measure HV. Let the, let the school board sell that on its own and answer for how they spent Measure S money.
Thank you very much. Your time is 30 seconds over now, so thank you.
Oh, thank you, sorry. Bye.
Sure. Anyone else?
Mayor, we do not have any other virtual hands raised.
Okay, anyone else in the council chambers? Okay, bringing it back to the council for deliberations. Maybe it's easier to tackle one measure at a time. Does that sound reasonable? Maybe we could start with Measure, Measure A. That's probably the harder one to figure out. But go ahead, Councilmember Jackson.
I was prepared to speak on HV, Mr. Mayor. That's the first one on the?
Okay, we can go to HV. Sure, we can go to that one first.
Appreciate the speakers, appreciate the comments, appreciate your involvement. As we all know, schools play a vital role in shaping a community. It's crucial that we, as a community, commit to investing in our future through education. So I am happy to move that we support Measure HV, Hermosa Beach's City School District's General Obligation Bond Program, which will appear on the November 5, 2024, general election ballot.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion? Councilmember Massey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just point out that the school district did a terrific job with Measure S. Vista School and the renovated View School are hugely beneficial to our community. Investing in Valley, giving it the same amount of attention is not only going to be good for generations of schoolkids that follow, but also all of our property values because the demographic that's moving into our town are parents with schoolkids and they are paying a premium to live here because of the quality of the Hermosa Beach City School District. So frankly, I suspect we're getting more than a dollar-for-dollar return on our investment in our schools and I'm happy to support the motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll just endorse my support for Measure HV as well. It's a good return on the value of your property values, if anything else. And it's good for the schools. And I'm reluctant lots of times on city councils taking positions on all kinds of measures, but this one is right here in Hermosa Beach. It's important and I fully support Measure HV as well. If there is no further discussion, then Madam City Clerk, let's start voting. Okay, the tally has been recorded up on the screen. Madam City Clerk, could you announce the vote?
Motion carries unanimously by a 5-0 vote.
Thank you. So now we are going to move on to Measure A. Councilmember Massey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is obviously a complicated problem. Homelessness is such a challenging problem regionally. Throwing money at it by itself is not a solution necessarily, but having financial resources is essential. Measure H has improved things. I think Mayor Bass in LA has improved things utilizing some of the Measure H funding. Measure A would essentially remove the sunset from Measure H, as I understand it. So we would have a continuing evergreen source of funding to go towards homeless services and homeless programs. The concern, as I understand it, that animated the COG, the South Bay Cities Council of Governments, to take no position on Measure A is a concern over uncertainty as to how the Measure H funding will be distributed regionally. I'm very sympathetic, frankly, to the larger cities in our region, the city of Los Angeles in particular, because their homelessness problem is significantly more acute than a lot of the surrounding cities. And there's a lot of reason for that. There's a lot of pushing our homeless problem from surrounding cities into the city of LA historically. The city of LA is also the one who often is assumed to be the city that's going to build housing. There has to be a point at which the cities in the region, including Hermosa Beach, recognize that everybody's got to do their fair share to build permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, the type of resources that we need. And that's often the challenge, is getting the smaller cities, individual cities like ours, to accept the fact that we are willing to do our fair share provided our neighboring cities do their fair share. So there's absolutely a need for funding for homeless services and homeless programs. The concern I have with Measure A is how the money will be distributed and our assurance is that it will be distributed equitably. So despite the fact that, my understanding is the city of Los Angeles was heavily involved in drafting Measure A. And I think there's good reason for that and for the larger cities to get a substantial portion of the funding for Measure A. I do have concerns about, and I think those are shared by our neighbors in the South Bay with respect to how the money will be distributed amongst the cities in our region. So I'm more than happy to be persuaded either way on Measure A, but I was comfortable with the COG Board's decision to take no position on Measure A, understanding, of course, as the deputy city manager said, that if Measure A fails, there's another opportunity in 2026 to put perhaps an improved ballot measure on the ballot so that everybody can vote on it prior to the sunsetting of Measure H. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Detoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was supportive of Measure H the first time around. I think, as Councilmember Massey mentioned, this is an issue that needs funding. I'm very supportive of the current funding. I have a couple of concerns. AB 79, 1679-- AB 79, uh, 1679, um, which lifted the cap for local government. It was introduced in February of '23 regarding horse racing. Made it through committee, 20 to 0. And then all of a sudden, on June 19th, it was pulled. And it was completely rewritten to address this subject. And after that, it got ushered through quickly and within, uh, four months, was approved and then chaptered and signed by the governor. This one caught a lot of local governments flat-footed. I talked to our Cal City's staff member, and they, because everything was teed up for horse racing, they weren't really paying attention to this bill after it was modified. So that is one issue I have with this bill. If this bill simply removed the sunset, we wouldn't probably be having this conversation. But removing the sunset and also doubling it, I do have issue with. Especially when we're talking to our residents about more of a local control revenue. I just, I, I can't in good consciousness take a supportive position of this as a city. I would, with the concerns of funding, I know, catch flak from folks on one side of the aisle, but I would, I would like to sense from my colleagues a, a, an opposed position and kind of send a statement that there are so many question marks on how much local revenue we would receive. And again, I know this is a global issue. It needs funding. I deal with this on my day job. Every day I'm at work. But those are my major concerns. Again, 1679, I'm not too happy with where that went down. And would love to hear more from my colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, I have concerns about the fact there is no sunset. It doubles what we had in place. It's a regressive tax like sales taxes are, which affects the lowest-income people out there shopping. And I don't know, I might consider a, taking no position on this. That's what the COG took, right? No position? Correct.
Yes, that is correct. And for what it's worth, um, we have the homeless services coordinator from the COG in attendance tonight, who can probably answer questions that we might have about Measure A and the, and the COG's concerns about it, I would think, to sharpen the point if any of the council members want that.
Right, okay. So, yeah, tho- those are my positions on that. Mayor Protem.
Councilman Massey, did you just say we have someone from the COG here tonight that could speak on this?
We do. Ron Sanchu, the homeless services coordinator for the COG, who's, I think, quite knowledgeable about Measure A and about the COG's, the COG staff's concerns about, Measure A, in terms of its benefit to South Bay cities.
Thank you for being here tonight. Just in general, I'm, I'm looking at our report here, and it says fund purpose. Solely for the purposes of preventing homelessness, reducing homelessness, making housing more affordable in Los Angeles County. Here are the limitations. I was assuming that this list of limitations is things that it's not going to be spent on. Is that correct?
Sorry, what, what are the limitations? I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, well, it says any lawful purpose of LACAHSA. Programs and services that support physical and mental health care, emerging housing, permanent housing, job counseling, substance abuse disorder treatment, short-term rental subsidies and related services, and then so on and so on. Construction of affordable housing, uh, data collection and so on. Those are things that this, these funds won't be spent on?
No, that's incorrect.
Or will be spent?
They will be spent on those, those things.
Okay, all right. Uh, short-term rental subsidies?
Yes.
How does that take place? Some of these funds would go to, um, not pay for their short-term rentals, of course, on a monthly basis, but a weekend basis.
Oh, no, no, not, not, not short-term as in like Airbnb.
Subsidize the construction of short-term rentals.
Uh, no, no, it would be, for example, uh, we, we actually offer that service at the COG. We call it time-limited subsidies. So that, what that means is within the one-to-two-year period, we pay for someone's rent. Uh, so, so why we would do that is maybe someone got injured on the job, can no longer hold the job for, on a temporary basis, needs maybe some time to cure themselves and then can work again. And so for a temporary basis, we would provide that subsidy to get them back on their feet.
Right.
Here in Hermosa Beach, when you say short-term rental, it means something a world of difference.
Right, right.
So I really, that was a question.
Mayor Protem, could I elaborate briefly on that point about the short-term rental subsidy? Because I think it's something different than it might sound like in a city like ours, which has a lot of short-term rentals and people use them to vacation. There's several misnomers about our homeless population. One of them is that people are coming from out of the region to take advantage of the good weather and the services that are provided. UC San Francisco did a study, and there were a couple of interesting findings. One is that over 80% of our homeless population in our region came from the region. And they highlighted a typical path into homelessness and how it can be prevented with short-term rental subsidies. So, for example, let's say you have a laborer who's a drywall hanger and drops a piece of drywall on his foot, breaks his foot. He's out of work for four to six months. Doesn't have any health insurance. So first thing that happens is, his truck probably gets repossessed. Excuse me, he gets evicted first, and then he's living in his truck. And then his truck gets repossessed, and now he's homeless. And what UC San Francisco said was, we can prevent people from falling into homeless and a scenario, homelessness in a scenario like that cost-effectively if we just gave them a little bit of rental subsidy that would allow them to stay in their home while they healed and got back into the workforce.
Yeah. I understand that now. Now that we've figured out the, the term "short-term rental," I understand that. It's interesting that you would, uh, use that scenario because when I was about 18 years old, I dropped a sheet of drywall on my foot and broke my foot, and I was out of work for some months. Didn't work out the way you said, though. I did not end up homeless. But it was because I found something else I could do in the meantime. But anyway, okay, so, uh, that's beside the point. So, construction of affordable housing, data collection and analysis to evaluate effectiveness of programs funded by this new tax, county reimbursements for its reasonable costs to collect and distribute this new tax. Any lawful purpose of LACAHSA? What is any lawful purpose?
Um, I think it's just syntax. I, I, I don't know what an unlawful purpose of La Casa would be. So you got me there. But yeah, I mean, basically, uh, La Casa, I'm actually an alternate on that board. It is represented by a lot of state, uh, or a lot of city officials. For example, the mayor of Long Beach as well. Beverly Hills City Councilmember John Marish represents us on that board. And, uh, yes, one of the duties of La Casa is to allocate about 40, 40% of the funds for Measure A to affordable housing development, rental subsidies, and that long list of things that you mentioned. Uh, that, that is the new part of the funding that didn't exist with Measure H. So that will go towards more housing-related, um, um, funding.
And Measure A will be a continued support, financial support for what the same program that Measure H was?
Yeah, the, the Measure H part of Measure A will basically stay the same. Yeah, and that, that was part of the issue the COG had with it, was that we think there could be improvements made on, on the Measure A portion of it. Namely, what, uh, Councilmember Massey said, the funding allocations don't quite, um, add up in terms of the funding coming to the, to our cities. A lot of our cities use their, use their general funds to, to, to build shelters and services. And, and we don't necessarily, and so with all this money coming into Measure H, the question is, why, why aren't we seeing more of that money come to the cities? And why are the cities using more general funds? So that, that is the, the rub at the COG is, is, is that issue.
So you were involved in Measure H?
No, I wasn't actually. Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't doing homelessness at the time, but, um...
Maybe you would then not be the person to ask this, but under Measure H, and has homelessness gotten any better in the last year or so?
Uh, in the South...
Because of these funds?
Right. It's, that's a tricky question to answer. I, I think if you look numerically across the county for the past seven years, the answer is no, right? Mathematically, it's gone up. So the answer is no to that. In the South Bay, uh, we've done a great job with the cooperation of, of your city council, as well as the city councils across the South Bay region, in providing innovation, innovative services. So one of the things that we do is that just-in-time funding that Councilmember Massey talked about, being able to provide someone a security deposit when they need it. Right now, if you were to go to a county agency to do that or a nonprofit agency, it takes like eight weeks to get a security deposit. No landlord will wait around eight weeks to get a security deposit. They're, they'll find another tenant immediately. At the COG, we can do same-day security deposits. So at the COG, we're actually more successful than the rest of the region, uh, using Measure H funds to address homelessness. So, so the, so the answer in the South Bay is we've actually decreased homelessness in the South Bay. And right now, unsheltered homelessness in our 15 cities in the South Bay is under 1,000 people. And so it, it's, it's pretty solvable. And in fact, if anyone tells you that you can't solve homelessness, that's BS. You can definitely solve homelessness, especially in the South Bay area.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any more comments, Councilmember Protem? Anyone willing to offer up a motion? Councilmember Jackson?
I'd just like to thank Ron San, Terrera. Thank you for all your efforts. I mean, it's because of your efforts and Angela and working with the city so closely that we've been able to tackle this very complicated and complex issue. So thank you for your efforts. You know, this is hard. You know, is, is throwing more money at this the question? I mean, that's really the question we have to answer, right? Is, is, is that the right way to move forward? And you're seeing how this thing is playing out. You look at, um, I believe it's Norwalk, and there is a big, I won't say, there's a contest right now, a, a, you know, Governor Newsom in Sacramento is pushing back against Norwalk's decision to say, hey, we're not going to do any more of these things that we've been doing for years because we're not happy with the funding. Where, where, you know, where's the accountability? Where's the accessibility to these fundings that we as taxpayers are paying into? And we're not seeing that return. And we're dipping into our general fund. We've built housing. We've built temporary housing. But we're not seeing that, that return. So Norwalk made a decision, says, we're not doing anything else. And, um, and now there's a big contest and a big fight that's playing out between Sacramento and Norwalk. So I, I agree with my colleagues. I think the half cent is a bit too far at this juncture because I, I'm concerned about the accountability of the, of the dollars and our ability to get our quote-unquote "fair share" of those dollars that we're paying into. So while I, um, am certainly sympathetic, and I believe that we as a city should be paying in part for the effort to cure this problem, I, I think a half a cent now is, is not the right route. I would support a quarter cent at a future time, but certainly not the half cent now. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Massey.
I, I move that we take no position on Measure A.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. I will support that. Any other comments before we go to vote? Okay, Madam City Clerk, could you begin voting? The motion is to take no position, yeah. Oh, you seconded?
So I did second it.
Okay.
So we're voting yes on a no vote.
Neutral. Neutral position. Yes on a neutral position. Take no position on it. Take no position. You can correct that if you want.
Yeah.
Well...
I apologize. The intent of the motion was that we stay neutral on Measure A.
Yeah, I, I thought you said no, like a no position on it, which is what I seconded. But, um, I will leave it at that.
Okay.
Would you like to cast? Oh, there you go.
Okay, uh, Madam City Clerk, could you announce the vote?
Motion carries by a 3-2 vote with Mayor Protem Saman and Councilmember Detoy voting no.
Okay, that was to take no position on it.
Correct, a neutral, neutral position.
Neutral position, as long as we have it straight. Okay. That's okay. Okay, Madam City Clerk, what do we have next on our agenda?
Item 17D, Report on the City's Options Regarding Public Camping Ordinances in Light of City of Grants Pass, Oregon v. Johnson et al.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Madam City Clerk. Part of this item is mine. Before I'm going to turn it over to Deputy City Manager Cressby, we do have a brief PowerPoint that I will hope will appear as I finish this statement. The purpose of tonight's item is to, of course, provide an update on the recent U.S. Supreme Court case in Grants Pass, as well as discuss some other options as it pertains to the unhoused population in the city. Next slide, please. By way of brief background, at the September 10th, 2024 meeting, Councilmember Detoy requested, with Mayor Protem Saman and Mayor Francois supporting an item dealing with potential options as it pertains to public camping in the city in light of the Grants Pass decision and other issues related to the city's unhoused population. Next slide, please. So the city's existing regulations pertaining to public camping are really codified in two sections, as stated on the screen, 12.20.240 and 12.28.010. They, they discuss camping or overnight sleeping on the beach and strand, as well as the prohibition of camping in any public park or playground, except as allowed by the city manager. Next slide, please. So the upshot is that the existing municipal code only prohibits the camping or overnight sleeping in those two places. It does not prohibit camping in every public place in the city. Now, in the past few years, there have been a few decisions out of the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeal, which is the federal appellate court germane, and that has precedent, presidential value to the city of Hermosa Beach. It's kind of imperative that we explain those cases first so that the recent, uh, decision from the Supreme Court is better understood. Next slide, please. So the two appellate court cases are Martin v. City of Boise, and then, of course, Johnson versus City of Grants Pass. And what they stood for are kind of the following two propositions. Arresting homeless individuals involuntarily sitting, lying, or sleeping in public when the city does not, does not provide a shelter bed in its jurisdiction for that potential arrestee violates the cruel and unusual clause of the U.S. Constitution, and that similarly, a prohibition on the use of bedding, sleeping, or other material, you know, related to sleeping. And a regulatory framework where it was civil penalties first and then culminating in criminal punishment also violated the cruel and unusual clause of the United States Constitution. Next slide, please. So the core question that was addressed and answered in the Supreme Court's decision in Grants Pass was whether or not this civil and criminal framework in Grants Pass was legal. And just for your ratification, basically what it was, someone could receive, I believe it was up to three citations. They would then receive a civil stayaway order. Let's say that those three citations all occurred in the same city park. And then if they violated that civil stayaway order, there was a criminal arrest for, I want to say, 30 or 60 days. Answering in the negative, the Supreme Court held that the Eighth Amendment was focused on the method or kind of punishment that a government entity may impose for a violation of a criminal statute, not whether the government may criminalize particular behavior in the first place. Further, the court held that the camping ordinance in question did not criminalize status, i.e., did not criminalize being homeless, as it equally applied to anyone engaged in that conduct, whether that person was homeless or not. And one of the examples they gave is someone, you know, a protester that wants to camp out in a city park as part of a protest. They said that this, that provision would apply equally to that person as well as an unhoused individual. Next slide, please. So now recall, prior to this Supreme Court decision, those two Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals really cast doubt on the ability for a city to... Appeals really cast doubt on the ability for a city to kind of issue city, issue citations on a citywide prohibition on public camping, lying or sleeping to the unhoused unless the city could provide them somewhere to go. There, of course, were various issues raised by those two cases left unanswered about where that shelter bed must be. On that previous slide, there was a quote around jurisdiction. Does that mean it had to be within the city's jurisdiction? Could it be in a neighboring jurisdiction? And then, of course, like it, like all things, there are typically conditions placed on someone to be inside of a shelter, and whether or not those were valid could be enforced. So ultimately, there was a lot of confusion and a lot of cities, you know, were, were very, very reluctant to aggressively enforce their citywide anti-camping ordinances. However, in light of the Grants Pass decision, cities now can much more confidently enforce and possibly expand regulations on camping in the public areas, once again, just without the threat of the constitutional challenge under that aforementioned case law out of the Ninth Circuit. Next slide, please. It must be noted, as I, as it's included in the staff report, while this is undoubtedly a step in the right direction for local control and the ability for cities to, you know, pass and adopt ordinances on the matter, it's not going to be a panacea. Those where formal citations may be most necessary, where they're most obstinate, you know, counterintuitively are those where a citation will likely have the least effect. The city staff feels that the best course of action moving forward is, is going to continue its care-first approach, seeking to provide mental health, housing services, and other services aimed at addressing the underlying cause of the homelessness and kind of the core root of the problem as compared to simply papering individuals with multiple citations, et cetera. I won't list all of the options and current programs that the, that the city does. I will defer that to Deputy City Manager. But I will say that, you know, the, the discussion item tonight, and that's all it is going to be, a discussion item, is kind of teed up for the city council to consider whether or not the existing public sleeping, camping regulatory regime, which to reiterate, only applies on the beach and strand, and then in public parks, whether there's some efficacy in potentially expanding that to maybe all areas of the city or one area that that in researching this did come about, the green belt is not, is not considered in that. So if that, if that were the will of the, of the council to come back with a code amendment, that is something for your guys' consideration tonight. Next slide, please. Was that it? Is that all the slides? Okay, so never mind. I had your slide there, but never mind. That concludes my, my, my portion of the report. Deputy City Manager.
Thank you, Attorney Donigan. So, City Council, while we're having the discussion about the Grants Pass decision, we wanted to talk about two additional items that are related to the Grants Pass decision or homeless, our homeless response in general. The first one is the South Bay City Council of Governments distributed a Good Neighbor Pledge, which we included in the packet this evening, expressing a commitment to an approach that offers services and shelter as a cornerstone of strategies. They presented this pledge to the South Bay Cities for their consideration in signing on to the pledge. It essentially would express a commitment to services and shelter and a commitment to not engaging in strategies that would move individuals from one city to another. The second item that we would like council to consider this evening is also related to or from the South Bay City Council of Governments. They recently worked closely with the city of Redondo Beach on a program titled Functional Zero Street Homelessness. This program aims to supplement the homeless count data as a tool to monitor homelessness in a community by ensuring that the community's homeless services system is able to prevent homelessness wherever possible and ensure that when homelessness does occur, it is rare, brief, and one time. Specifically, the Functional Zero Street Homeless Program, or Functional Zero, is achieved when the number of people exiting street homelessness is greater than the number of people entering street homelessness, and the median duration of the current street population is less than 90 days. I've included also in the attachment to the staff report, a presentation which Ronson from the South Bay Cog provided. The South Bay City Council of Governments would like to announce its program results in Redondo Beach, and they're also prepared to announce their next cohort of cities to participate in the program at their October 30th celebration in Redondo Beach. They have expressed interest in exploring a beach cities program consisting of the cities of Hermosa Beach, El Segundo, Manhattan Beach. And due, due to our existing partnership that we have with our housing outreach navigators, the city of Manhattan Beach has confirmed its intent to participate at its October 1st, 2024 city council meeting. I'm not aware of, of any other cities at the time of writing this report that had agreed to sign on, but the question before you this evening is whether or not to adopt the Good Neighbor Pledge and also to consider allowing staff to participate in the Functional Zero Street Homelessness Program. We do have Ronson Chu, our senior project manager from, for homeless services from the South Bay Cog as well, available this evening. And with that, staff is available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Any council members have any questions of staff? Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Attorney, we talked about camping in public spaces. How does car camping play into that?
Sure. So.
We have a significant community.
So I would say there's, there was, there's kind of two issues to that. The, the first one is that prior to the Grants Pass decision, I would, I would advise this council, the same logic applies, i.e. if you cannot prohibit someone from saying, hey, you know, you're prohibited from camping anywhere in the street or anywhere in a public area, excuse me, you then couldn't similarly say, well, you're prohibited from camping or living out of your vehicle anywhere in the city. Basically, the same concept. You have to have somewhere for them to go, and then sure, things are, things you can, you can potentially regulate. The other complicating factor, it's a, another Ninth Circuit case, which the Supreme Court didn't, didn't bring up, of course, I believe it's Desert Train, and what it talks about is kind of the, I don't want to say the vagueness, but the difficulty in ascertaining who is living out of their car and who is potentially, you know, driving their RV filled with their kids just to the beach for a day and then eventually going to get back in said car and drive away. Now, once again, it's not impossible. We do think that there is probably a way to craft an ordinance that has a certain level of, of factors that if they're all checked, you know, hey, this isn't just, a guy just pulls over briefly for an hour and takes a nap in his car in front of the park, but repeated history, you know, four or five other factors in the vehicle, all indicating, hey, what you are doing here is, is actually living out of, out of the vehicle. Yes, it is, it is possible. I would say, yeah. So I would, I would, I would leave it at that. So it does open it up. The concerns about banning it citywide are no longer there in light of the Grants Pass decision. However, there is still some work and legwork to be done to, to flush it out.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Protam.
A quick question. You mentioned the green belt. And I didn't quite hear what you said. It was a little noisy, whatever. Can you repeat what you said about camping is currently allowed on the green?
Also, I mean, I, I wouldn't necessarily say that. I, I would say the, the explicit prohibition of camping in, in city parks, the way that the municipal code says, pub, city parks, public parks, and the green belt indicates that there's an argument that that doesn't apply to the green belt. I'm not saying that we couldn't make an argument to the contrary. I'm not saying that, as I said before, it's not like we allow it. Someone can't just go, go up there and, you know, take up a, a wide swath of it. What I'm saying is that same explicit prohibition we have about you are not allowed to camp in city parks is not as explicit as it pertains to the green belt.
Because you don't consider, or we don't consider the green belt a park?
So I wouldn't say that. I, I would simply say that the way the municipal code in certain sections list all, you know, list public parks and the green belt, the fact that it doesn't say that under the prohibition on camping in public parks makes it a little bit vague and a little bit, you know, ambiguous.
So you can't get your tent and sleep in the park?
Correct. Unless, unless, yeah.
Right now. But you can on the green belt.
Once again, I wouldn't say you can.
I'm just trying to determine what.
I would say, I would say that, that, that if it's the city council's desire to make that explicit, now is the time to give the city, uh, city staff that.
But I'm surprised it isn't explicit.
Yeah.
And I'm, don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to badger you here back and forth. I'm just saying, somehow or another, is the green belt, either it is a park or it isn't a park, and is it subject or not subject to the same laws in the park?
Correct. And so what I would say is that, of course, if there was a plethora of tents put up in the green belt, city staff and, and all of our, they, we wouldn't say, that's good, you know, good to go. We would jump on that. We would ensure, hey, you can't do this, you can't be here. I'm saying in my legal review of the municipal code, there could be some efficacy if it's the will of the council, just to make it more crystal clear.
Okay. So, all right. So I guess it's sort of beside the point what exists now because we're discussing changing it. And if we do, then we have a new.
Correct.
Camping is, sleeping on the ground is the same as camping?
Correct. No, so camping, they, they would typically camping requires a little bit more, you know, whether, whether that be a tent, a sleeping bag, a pillow, some other, you know, accoutrements next to you in terms of, I, I'm, I'm staying here for the, for the night or for the day as in someone gets out of the water, lays their, you know, lays their head down on a towel and closes their eyes. We're not going to consider that, that, that camping.
I bring this up because at the corner of Fifth and PCH, there's the 7-Eleven there, and there's a guy laying on the sidewalk there as you go up Fifth Street just past PCH, 100 feet past PCH. I go past that corner sometimes three, four, five times a day. Always there.
Yeah.
Always there. Monday through Fri, Sunday through Sunday, always lying there on the ground, passed out for the most part.
Sure.
So is he camping or is he a person that's laying on the sidewalk?
So, you know, I would say, I would say this. I, I probably don't feel comfortable opining on that right now without, without the, and once again, I'm not doubting the veracity of what you're saying. I would say that our, our current code doesn't necessarily speak to public sidewalks. So in this instance, it, it really would not matter. However, if it's the will of the council and that is something that you would like to have language crafted, I'm confident that we can provide that language for you all moving forward.
Okay. So that's kind of what we're supposed to be doing here this evening is determining.
Correct.
How far do we want to take this?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. So in other words, we could implement or create an ordinance that would make it unlawful to camp anywhere.
In, in, in.
Public, any public or private. Obviously, it already is against the law.
Private, and so, right, so private's a little dicey, you know, we don't want, well, actually, I should, we, we would need to make sure that there's carve-outs for, you know, summer sleepovers where the kids pitch the tent in the backyard, stuff like that. But so for the most part, what cities do in light of this, only focus on public areas.
Otherwise, they're trespassing if they're.
Sure. Exactly.
Okay. Right. So we could incorporate something like that to include.
Correct. It would be direction to myself and city staff to, to bring back ordinance to that effect.
And, sure. And we could incorporate something to, and that would include, of course, parks, green belt, we clean that up as well.
Correct.
And what about the Housing Initiative Court? Is that intended as an incentive by, by citing people for tickets instead of saying, well, you know, it doesn't do any good to cite them because they're never going to take care of it, but it would get them to go to the Housing Initiative Court? Is that something that's the advantage of, to begin citing them?
I think Police Chief LeBaron alluded to this a little bit earlier. We definitely take a cares-first approach with individuals, but we have to carefully balance how they're affecting quality of life and so quality of life issues that they can cite for. In a lot of cases, if they're able to do that, they will. Now, the Housing Initiative Court is a voluntary program. So the individual has to want to be a part of that, and it is for those misdemeanor tickets if they want to participate in the program. So some people who do have minor misdemeanor tickets will volunteer to participate in the program in exchange for going through different steps that the judge provides. They will expunge those tickets. But it, it isn't always the best and first strategy to use tickets as a means to encourage people to be housed.
Okay. And I have a question on the, on the Functional Zero Street program. What neighboring cities are currently part of that program? Do you have any?
All right. So the first city that participated and started the program with the South Bay Cog was the city of Redondo Beach. And so that's the only city thus far that's participated in the program, and South Bay Cog is currently looking for their, for their next participants and are willing to, interested in exploring a beach cities area partnership.
Okay. And as I understand, they, they can't have too many join at once because it will slow down their system, but they've invited us to join.
As part of the program, they do focus a lot on the individual cities. They dive into the numbers and the data. There, there's very little workload on the city staff side for participating. The workload's heavily on the South Bay Cog side. So I think the, the volume that they can take on is limited by.
Right. But if we'd signed up and joined that, we would have the advantage of using the cog to help us through that. What, what type of commitment would be involved in our part?
For our part, it would be participation in monthly meetings for the most part on city staff as well as our housing outreach navigators.
Okay. And then the Good Neighbor Pledge, again, it's just like this Functional Zero Street program, it's a, it's all a voluntary sign up. It doesn't, these, signing up for these programs do not limit us in what type of ordinances we can pass at the city level, correct?
So the Good Neighbor Pledge is less of a program. It's more of signing on to commitment, but it does state that we would commit to the strategies, which we already do, that would be a commitment to shelter first, services and shelter above moving people along to another city.
So how, does that commit us to something or how does that work when we take that pledge? It's a voluntary pledge.
It's a voluntary pledge, just expressing an approach.
So that cities don't move them to the next city and do horrible things like that to our.
Correct. Yeah, it's, it's a promise between cities that sign on that they will, that they're, they don't intend to do so.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Yes. Mayor Protam. I did, just a couple more. Back on the camping thing, let's say for, for instance, that we do craft an ordinance against camping on the street, in the sidewalk, let's say citywide, period, including the green belt. So now someone's camping on one of those areas. The police goes by, and I agree with the, let's try and help them first. That's absolutely the right thing to do. But after that seems ineffective or fails, what do we do next? We write a citation. Is that, I suppose that would be the logical thing, that we would have a citation level for, for this particular action. And so really, I think there's a problem with that because with citations, we write, we can write 100 of them, and nothing really seems to be accomplished because what happens eventually, they get 10 tickets and then they go to county jail or no? I don't think so. I think the, the tickets pile up until they end up going to court, to the homeless court, which is a great program. But I, and what I'm trying to say is, is that citations don't seem to be an effective way of handling the problem. People are still going to camp on the street because all they're going to get is a ticket, which they can ignore. And so they're just going to, maybe they pick up and move to the next corner and, and sleep there. How can we write a ordinance that has an effective program to actually stop camping on the street or stop camping in the city? What does that look like?
Sure. And so, and so I think that, you know, if, if that was easily implemented, it would have, it would be throughout the, you know, every, every jurisdiction in the, in the, in the state would, would likely include that. You are correct, Mr. Mayor Protam. An ordinance that allows, you know, our, our police officers an extra tool in their toolkit of saying, I'm going to issue you an administrative citation is not going to solve the problem overnight. We, we all know that. And so the, the, the idea that we can effectively write an ordinance that is going to solve the homeless issue in the city, I don't want to say is, is an impossible task. It is an extremely tall one. Once again, if that's, if that's the, the direction, we will put our heads together, but it's, it's, it's very unlikely that we're going to come back with something that says, here it is, here's the, the, the magic bullet. Because if we did, it would have been before you and I'm sure before a lot of your colleagues and neighbors in, in, in other jurisdictions, you know, some time ago.
Can we, would it be possible to write them a citation and also physically make them move from their spot where they are? So you're in a sleeping bag, you're on the corner. So, you're in a sleeping bag, you're on the corner, the police come by, they go, "You can't sleep here, you have to get up." They try to help the person, "Would you like a place to go? Can we give you some shelter?" and so on and so forth, when that, when they say no, and as I understand, it's about 85% don't want any help of any kind. And it's those people that are most of the problem, I think, as far as quality of life, and are most of each. And so, could we say that, "Here's your citation, now you have to get up and move." They get up and walk across the street, we tell them, "No, sorry, you can't stay here either." You have to make them get up and move. If we do that a number of times, they will get tired of being here, and they will leave somewhere.
And so, you know, I can't speak for the Chief of Police and how the effective, you know, use of resources, I will say that, sure, particularly too, if there are some other personal effects, like a tent is blocking, you know, the sidewalk access and ADA access and me like that, yes, undoubtedly, we're going to say, "Hey, you cannot have this here." Whether or not we are going to physically shadow someone as they walk a quarter mile down the road, a half mile east, north, and say, "Nope, here's another ticket, move, here's another ticket, move." You know, I will say that this ordinance, once again, there needs, you know, and I understand, if you walk by, the, I'm sure the example that you gave, kind of know it when you see it, but, you know, at least from a legal perspective, if someone walks from one corner and sits down, you know, to immediately give them a ticket and say, "You're camping," well, that becomes a little tenuous. There does need to be, and once again, I can't give you a specific timeframe that, once you're there for longer than 10 minutes, but sure, if they pull out the pillow, if they, you know, fire up a tent, then now, all of a sudden, yeah, we can get there.
Yeah, and I'm not saying every 10 minutes or shadow them, follow them around. I'm saying that if, an hour later, or two hours later, somebody else calls, "There's the guy in the corner in front of my house, blah, blah, blah," and they go, "It's the same guy." We have to go through this process over again. I'm asking these questions just food for thought here, we're supposed to be having a discussion, and we'll get to that soon, when we start talking about this, a discussion on what we can and can't do. So, I'm asking, what are the limits of what we can do? What's logical, what's practical of what we can do? So, that's why I'm asking these questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any more questions before we go to public input? Okay, Madam City Clerk, are there any cards that have been turned in for speaking?
Yes, we received one from Elka Warner.
Thank you. Good evening.
Elka Warner, Hermosa Beach resident, I'm glad we're addressing the homeless issue. I think it's really important, and a lot of people I've been speaking with don't feel safe. They say they don't want to go down to the pier before 6:00 AM and after 6:00 PM. So, especially women, they feel, you know, they're harassed sometimes, and what I want to address is the issue of the chronic homeless in our community. And there are several people who live here permanently, they sleep on the beach and in our parks, and in alcoves of public buildings, and there's one man who should be of concern for the city. Homeless advocates tell me, his name is Victor, I'm not going to give the last name. He walks up and down Pier Avenue, and will stop sometimes in his tracks, and he uses the computers at the library, and shops at Vons. Now, according to police reports, in 2020, he was arrested on a fugitive warrant out of Norwalk. He was arrested here in Hermosa Beach on a felony vandalism, charged for scratching a car with some kind of unknown object. In 2021, he tried to stab someone with a kitchen knife. In 2022, he threatened to kill a Hermosa Beach man who was jogging on the strand, and a year later, he threatened a woman and told her, "I see you, I'm going to kill you." The reaction from the police was, you know, "You should get a restraining order," but I'm not quite sure how you would serve a restraining order on someone that doesn't have a permanent address. Doesn't make sense. He's also gone off on, my mom and I, when we were at Trader Joe's, he was triggered by a car horn, and about two weeks ago, I was walking on Pier Avenue at 11:00 AM on a weekday, and this same man had an episode and started yelling at another man, and this other man had no idea who he was, and he was ready to fight him. And I have, you know, kind of Victor here confused, not knowing what to do, and I can play it for you. Play it again.
We'll give you 30 more seconds, okay?
Yep.
Three minutes.
So, this man needs help, he's a danger to himself and others, and I think we need to look at why he has fallen through the cracks when there are so many resources available. We need to help him, and that way, we'll help keep our residents safe as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, we do not have any virtual hands raised.
Okay, no more virtual hands, bring it back to the council chambers. Anyone in the city council chambers wishing to speak, come on up. Thank you.
Thank you, these are, these are very heavy matters that you're considering. I really appreciate Mayor Pro Tem, Seaman, for sparking a conversation as to what are the outcomes of some of the decisions that I don't imagine will be fully made tonight, but, you know, you're in the process of exploring them. I think that a conversation about what an anti-camping ordinance, citywide perhaps, or on all public lands in the city of Hermosa Beach, would look like, in terms of helping folks get off the street, helping the community feel safe, would benefit from a robust exploration as to what does enforcement look like currently for the anti-camping ordinances on the beaches and in the parks. I think that this conversation around the anti-camping ordinance is highly relevant to the Good Neighbor Pledge that you're also considering. If we do adopt a citywide, public spaces, anti-camping ordinance, I think that we're going to quickly run into a problem that the Mayor Pro Tem described, which is essentially, if we are chasing people around the city and issuing repeated citations, the logical next step for that person is to go into a neighboring jurisdiction that either does not have such a pledge, or that they just haven't been cited in yet. And so, I think that those, these two items need to be carefully considered together, as to whether or not the city can in good conscience sign the pledge, and also make a citywide anti-camping ordinance. Encampments, as we typically describe them, are multiple tents together, very unsafe, very unsafe for residents, very unsafe especially for the people that are living in them. We do not want to see encampments of the type that we see in other parts of Los Angeles County, come to Hermosa Beach, but simultaneously, I think that we need to explore, how does a citation, a repeated citation that presumably eventually turns into an arrest? I'm not exactly sure what the mechanism is there. How does that then interact with the CARES courts? How does that interact with the various county and statewide psychiatric programs that are available to these residents that are repeatedly cited for the anti-camping ordinances? We have a ballot measure that passed in California, Prop 1, on the March primary ballot, that is intended to spend billions of dollars over the next 10 years on building statewide psychiatric facilities that are primarily intended to remedy the situation we have on the streets now, which is tens of thousands of people across California suffering from public mental health crises, some of which are in Hermosa Beach, those folks being able to actually get psychiatric beds. I don't think that, right now, we can say confidently that beds are available for, certainly, all of Los Angeles County, there might be beds available for.
Time's up, I'll give you 30 more seconds, okay?
Thank you, I appreciate that, Mayor. There might be beds for the handful of folks in Hermosa Beach that are experiencing psychiatric illness. I think that I would also like to see the city council and the city staff explore what beds are available there before immediately jumping into the anti-camping ordinance, but I would support that if it comes to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak? Step right up. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, city council members, just want to address two things. The Functional Zero Program, as the public speaker to speakers before, identified a major issue that our cities unfortunately cannot address properly, and that's behavioral health issues amongst our homelessness population. The reason why we see these people on our streets day after day after day is because we rely on county resources to address the mental health issue and behavioral health issues, and that's the very reason why we need the Functional Zero Program, is so that we can collect the data and advocate to the county how much mental health beds we need, what types of behavioral beds we need, and so on and so forth, so that we can solve that portion of the population that we can't do ourselves. In terms of the Good Neighbor's Pledge, oh, and then, just to clarify, on the Functional Zero Program, the Redondo Beach was a pilot program, and it's been very successful. So, now, because we've seen success in Redondo Beach, we want to roll that out to the other cities. We have very limited resources, like Angela mentioned, so we wanted to target the beach cities, and the Torrance has also signed on to it as well. So, we got Torrance in Manhattan Beach, and I'm also talking to the city of El Segundo on that. For the Good Neighbor's Pledge, just to clarify, the Good Neighbor's Pledge does not prevent the city from adopting more stringent anti-camping ordinances. Anti-camping ordinances to us at homeless services is a health and safety issue, right? We want to make sure our streets, our parks are healthy and safe for folks, and so, it doesn't prevent cities from doing that. In fact, the homeless court that you all have, and a lot of cities don't have, actually helps with the cause, because we're able to use the carrot and the stick approach, you know, using the stick to get people to homeless court, so they can accept services, and oftentimes, they do. I think Councilmember Seaman made some good points about enforcement. I would encourage you to think of the population as two different populations. There are people that will accept services, and there are people that won't. A lot of times, the people that won't accept services do have those behavioral health issues, are preventing them from making the right decisions, and so, again, that's why we need the Functional Zero Program to solve that part of it. Thanks.
Thank you. Could I ask you a question while you're here? And thank you for everything you do, and for coming down and doing this. Did you state that the Functional Zero Street Program could help us deal with the scenario that one of the speakers brought up about a person that has a lot of mental health issues, does these acts in public that seem to be threatening people, and all this, and it continues to be a chronic situation? Could you explain how that, if any, the Functional Zero Street Program could assist or help in that condition, because those are real concerns that people in the community have?
Yeah, I think one of the issues we have with mental health in general is, we don't have any data, so we don't know how many people in our communities are suffering from these ailments. And so, like, if you were to ask me how many people in Hermosa Beach suffer from mental health and are also homelessness, I have no idea. I don't have a clue how many people there is in Torrance that suffer that condition. And so, that's why we need the Functional Zero Program to gather this information, and so that we can then be able to advocate for these people. We can then tell DMH, Department of Mental Health Services, "Hey, in Hermosa Beach, we're seeing these same five people, it's been, you know, 700 days, it's been over two years, and they're still on our streets. What are you going to do to get these people into a conservatorship, or something else that they can benefit from to get off our streets?" And so, that's what we intend to do at the COGS, to advocate. The Functional Zero Program is a data program that gives these folks a voice, and so that they can be seen and heard by our county infrastructure that are providing, supposed to be providing these services for our constituents that are suffering from these ailments.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else from the chambers wishing to speak? Okay, bring it back to the council for deliberations. Councilmember Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It seems like we can have our cake and eat it too, so to speak, on this, because I don't see any inconsistency with signing on to the Good Neighbor Pledge, applying to be part of the Functional Zero Program, and considering whether we want to strengthen our anti-camping ordinance. Let me just tick them off briefly. We've talked a lot at the COG Board about this, so this is certainly a topic that I'm fairly familiar with. The Good Neighbor Pledge is simply good public policy, in my opinion. If the county breaks down into 88 different cities that are all basically trying to kick their homeless people out of the city limits, under penalty of going to jail if they don't, we're just going to be creating instability in the regional homeless population and pushing folks around, and that's going to create challenges for our mental health evaluators, our law enforcement, and everybody else, because we're going to just have a rotating cast of characters, and no instability, no ability to really get to know and understand, develop relationships with, and try to connect to services, the homeless population that we see in the city of Hermosa Beach. So, I'm a strong proponent of the Good Neighbor Pledge. I'm also a strong proponent of Functional Zero. Ronson, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm not even sure, I can't see a downside to applying for the Functional Zero Program. I mean, is there a cost involved? Is there a downside?
It's actually something the county and we all should be doing. There's 100 cities with their own, across the nation, with their own Functional Zero Program, but for whatever reason, our county has not done a Functional Zero Program. I don't know why. We lobbied for it, and so, we end up doing it ourselves. And, yeah, there is, I mean, it's, what it is, it's a goal-setting exercise, it's a data and goal-setting exercise. We want to create a goalpost and not move it, and this is our goal, this is what we want to do. And I don't know, maybe people are scared of putting down a goal and not being able to make it, but we want a goal, so that we can have an end game to all this.
Right, and it's, we're going to celebrate next month, Redondo's achievement of Functional Zero, essentially, so they joined the program, and they've achieved Functional Zero, as we understand it.
Yeah, and I just want to clarify, it doesn't mean homelessness will be zero. It means you're functionally zero. So, there will always be people that are dropping drywall on their feet and becoming homeless, unfortunately, but when that happens, we want to make sure there are resources in place where they can quickly get back on their feet, and that's what Functional Zero is. So, you're always going to have homelessness, but when that happens, it's a quick experience, and they're just back into functioning member of society again.
Right, and then, so thank you, Ronson, on that. And then, with respect to what Grants Pass enables us to do by way of amending our anti-camping ordinance, the one thing I'll just point out as a matter of history, I think most of us know this, so I'll keep it brief, but our homelessness plan was the result of four public meetings, and there is a provision in our homelessness plan which says, "We will not allow encampments." And so, encampments are where somebody sets up a tent and begins to collect sort of personal possessions around it, and sort of create some level of permanence. We already, that's why you don't typically see those in the city, right? We have had challenges with folks at the Second Street bathrooms, for example, and so on and so forth, but generally speaking, we move people along if they start to take root in a particular area of the city. So, we do have, and have adopted as part of our plan, some measure of eliminating or preventing the permanence of folks living on the streets or otherwise. So, if we want to review our anti-camping ordinance, I don't necessarily see it as inconsistent with some of our past efforts, and it's certainly something we can consider if we want to. But, at the end of the day, you know, I think the Good Neighbor Pledge is designed to basically say, "We're going to continue to put our resources into trying to achieve Functional Zero, which is getting people exiting homelessness." We're not just simply going to go around and start writing checks and telling people, "You got to move along out of the city, or we're going to put you in jail." Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and I wholeheartedly agree that we can stiffen up our ordinance and support these other two programs. Mr. City Attorney, do we have a separate ordinance against encampments? Meaning, so, now, there's people that will go out and set up camp for the day, and then they take it down, they go somewhere else. they take it down, they go somewhere else at night, and store it, I don't know, they store it somewhere. Is there an ordinance against that, or?
Right, Toby, no. So at least in my view, there's not a dedicated ordinance about encampments and then camping. Now, once again, oftentimes, if you set up an encampment, there's a multitude of things for which you are doing. Going back to the Second Street bathroom, you are basically monopolizing a public asset that is meant to be a bathroom and turning it into a residence. So the fact that there's not a explicit prohibition or ordinance on quote-unquote "encampments" doesn't mean there's nothing we can do to stop it. So to answer your question, no, we don't have a separate ordinance on encampments versus camping, but you know, once again, if the direction is to quote-unquote "stiffen up the ordinance," it will be clear that it would apply to both.
So we could adopt something like that, because there are situations where people do set up an encampment all day long, and then as sunset approaches, they basically have somewhere they go. I don't know where they go, but then they come back the next day. So I didn't know whether that was something that...
Yeah, I mean, so you're saying that someone would set up a, and once again, I'm not trying to pry too deep, but in terms of like a tent in the park and just sit there from when it's open to when it closes, and then they pack up all their stuff, and as you said, go somewhere else?
Yeah, a tent or other, you know, I don't know where you draw the line when there's other...
Sure. Right, and so, yeah, as I said, told Mr. Mayor Protem, I can't really opine on specific individual scenarios.
No, no.
And once again, what this should be, what we should rely upon this is just simply another tool in the police officer's toolbox. So if they see someone in the park with all that stuff, they're not going to immediately show up and say, "Here's your ticket." They're going to say, "Hey, what's going on?" And if someone says, "Hey, I'm here for the day, I'm driving up north tomorrow, okay, make sure you pick up your trash, and you know, you can't do X, Y, and Z," and if that's it, they'll probably, you know, let them move along.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone down here? Councilmember DeToye.
Thank you. As I alluded to earlier, this is something I dealt with. 24 hours ago, I had a Dodge cell phone that was thrown at me from a homeless person that, whose electric chair ran out of batteries. At 6:00 a.m., he was called back, or someone called up for him, and he was a little bit more in his senses, and we strapped his electric chair and got him into a shelter this, you know, this morning. So also at 3:00 a.m., we responded to a homeless person that overdosed. So as I said, I see this all the time in my day job. I agree with, it seems like what's going to be the majority on the council right here. I don't think that if we were to sign on to these Good Neighbor Pledge or Function Zero, street homelessness programs, that we can't also relook at the public camping ordinances. I do have a big issue with the sidewalks due to ADA access and, you know, people who are pushing strollers. So sidewalks is something that I'd look into, along with green belt, and again, let staff figure out what's coming back to us at our next meeting, but in support of all three of those. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
I also don't see any problem with both ideas, the Functional Zero Street Homeless Program and the Good Neighbor's Pledge, and looking into camping ordinances in the city. I ask the questions I ask, not because I'm proposing those things, I ask them because as you think about what logically happens if we do have an ordinance, then what's the next thing? Well, what, how will those citations be effective? Or how would the ordinance even be effective? How can we enforce it? Those are, like I said, food for thought. So I think I would support both ideas, and then I would like to bring back at the next meeting, and perhaps a staff report on what the chief might be able to chime in on this quite well, about what we can do to actually make such a program effective. And in general, I think, I personally see little difference between camping and encampment. One's larger than the other and more severe, of course. With an encampment, when you have a collection of junk, and a tent, and some plastic, and so on and so forth, might be very easy just to say, "This is an encampment here, and you're violating the law of Hermosa Beach, and you have an hour, or two hours, or 10 hours, or whatever it is, to move it or lose it," and it goes away. So might be one thing we could do with an encampment. Camping is another story, whole different problem. So let's bring it back, let's talk about it, let's try and, this is nothing we need to jump into, and let's just go do this, and it's wonderful, we need to talk about this, we need to get it right, I think. And so I'm in favor of bringing it back and discussing it, and I'm all with the Good Neighbor Pledge and the homeless zero, Function Zero Program.
Okay, great. So we have a consensus to join the two programs, it sounds like, pretty much unanimous, and then do you have enough direction to come up with some type of proposed ordinance, or do you want to go that far yet? Oh, go ahead.
I'm ready to make a motion, Mr. Mayor. I think that might make the city attorney...
100%, and then I just want to be sure, so as of right now, they are in two different sections of the immunity code, right? We have a section on the beach and strand, we have a section on the parks, and at least in hearing somewhat of the appetite, it wants to be so expansive that it's just going to be in one spot that encompasses all of those things. So that, at least that's the direction I'm hearing from you, as long as I don't hear any objection. Apologies for the interruption. Councilmember Massey, you can go.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we direct staff to bring back at a future council meeting an agenda item on different or additional options related to public camping in light of the recent U.S. Supreme Court case, City of Grants Pass, Oregon versus Johnson, that we direct, that we approve the Good Neighbor Pledge and authorize the mayor to sign the pledge on behalf of the city of Hermosa Beach, and we direct staff to participate or apply to participate in the South Bay City Council of Governments Functional Zero Street Homelessness Program.
Second.
Well crafted. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion before we go to a vote? Okay, Madam City Clerk.
And I will amend exact verbiage from the first section after we listen back.
Okay, the result is up on the screen. Madam City Clerk, could you announce the tally?
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. And what is next on our agenda?
We have future agenda items.
We do, we have future agenda items. Okay. Any council members have any future agenda items, suggestions?
I have a suggestion, and I'm not sure if this would actually need to be something that we agendize, but perhaps so. Tonight's multiple failure is certainly no one's fault, but it does bring it to a head that there is some serious problems with how we're broadcasting to the city. I know that while Spectrum has problems, they've said that their equipment is old and needs to be refurbished, and they're working on it, and it could take months more. Don't we have a contract with them, and don't we pay them for that service? And since we're not getting much of it, are we getting any kind of a refund for it or not? Is there another alternative cable company we can use in the meantime until they get their act together and get it fixed? I guess what I'm trying to say is there's a level of frustration here to where it's just getting to be a little too much, that it doesn't work, it works sometimes, almost never, and we just have to wait for it over and over again. In the meantime, we don't seem to be doing anything else except while we get it on YouTube and on the website, which seemed to be working fine too, but then now that's broken down. So is there something we can do about getting it fixed, getting, having some alternative? Maybe an alternative to YouTube? Is there such an animal? How can we resolve this a little bit better than the way we're doing it? Because it just seems like we're just waiting, waiting and waiting and waiting for something that may not happen.
It's true.
It's a pretty broad trajectory.
Yeah, without getting into a discussion, what type of item could we put on an agenda that would...
It doesn't need to be an item. I can bring you, I can provide an update by email. There's no action that council is able to take that would resolve the issue, and I think if I provided a summary by email, that may be clear. Tonight's issue was a confluence of matters. The Spectrum issue is separate, of course, but we are not able to control the source of power we get for this building. There was an outage in the city, that is why there was equipment failure. That is nothing that the council can solve. I'm happy to put that in an email.
I know, I said at the beginning, it's not anybody's fault.
Oh, no, I understand that.
I'm not blaming anyone.
I didn't take it that way. I'm sharing that, I didn't want to give the impression that a staff report is necessary. I think a summary by an email would be, or an information item, we can do that.
I would think an information item might be better, because then the public gets to see the explanation and what we can or can't do, and why, and so on and so forth. And that was mostly my concern. I understand, I don't need to watch it at home, because I'm here. I'm thinking of everyone else out there that's frustrated and saying, "Well, okay, the cable was bad enough, and now that's not working, and now this isn't working either, and now I'm sitting at home watching the meeting, and it's gone. What do I do? What can we do?" So I think some explanation, if we could give to the folks at home, what's going on and kind of give an explanation for that. I think that would go a long way toward giving them an understanding of the problem. Because right now, they don't even, they can't even hear us talking about it. That's, you know, this just makes it worse.
I'm wondering if an item of what we can do to improve the system.
Okay.
You know, a review of the contract that we have with them, and if they're abiding by it, or what we can do to improve the whole system, all of it together.
And so, and don't quote me on something, I don't believe that we contract with Spectrum and pay them. I believe it's a franchise, but once again, so it's not like, they are not, to my knowledge, it's not like they're charging us 500 bucks tonight to broadcast the meeting.
We have a franchise agreement with them.
And so, right, and so I want to make, and so I just want to make sure that people understand that we're not, they don't send us a bill tomorrow saying, "Hey, we went ahead and broadcasted the meeting last night, go ahead and give us X amount of dollars," but understood.
But there's a franchise agreement that may not be, may or may not be abided by, and maybe we need to look at it, and I don't know if that...
Actually, I think, isn't it a function of federal law that they're required to broadcast local government proceedings?
And so once again, that is vaguely ringing a bell. I wasn't prepared for this topic, so I don't want to speak...
That's exactly why I'm suggesting, we bring it back for a discussion, or an explanation, or a report of some sort that gives us all the particulars of, yes, it's a federal requirement, no, we don't pay for it, and so on and so forth, and what can we do to get some other form of communication with the public?
I support that. Is there a third?
Well, all you need is two for an information item, and I think an information item is just the appropriate vehicle.
Information item, I would be happy with that, that'd be fine.
Great, thank you. Anyone else have anything? Okay, great. This meeting is adjourned at 11:03 p.m. Thank you.